Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again. We'll start with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 1st, 2016. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
I move A and B.
Motion by Kraft, second by Rogers. Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to one resolution approving the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Sorry.
Yes?
I have a question.
Yes?
Is Tim Kavanaugh in the audience? I emailed Tim, there's something weird on this, if you look at the list of the vehicles, it looks like some of these nonprofit vehicles are running with regular license plates. And I am very curious about why that would be. The only thing I can think of is something very sinister, and that is that they don't want to disclose their nonprofit vehicles. So, I did ask Mr. Kavanaugh, and he said that the numbers had nothing to do with it. However, some vehicles, nonprofits, could be operating with regular license plates, which, you know, years ago, unfortunately, a lot of nonprofits bought license plate holders that covered the part that said tax exempt. And so, the state of Nebraska moved it down, so it can't be covered. So, anyway, maybe...
Do you want to hold off?
No, I don't think I want to hold off, but I think, just bring it to your attention that maybe some of these people driving brand-new Jaguars want to hide the fact that they're not paying taxes. So, we'll see. There's no new Jaguars on here, but there's some pretty new cars.
Okay.
One of them at our alma mater, Kavanaugh. Anyway, I just want to bring it up, and it's something I'm looking into.
Okay.
But otherwise, we'll guess in better row.
Okay.
Thanks.
Does that motion include adjournment? Second. So, the motion was made by Rogers, seconded by Duda. Please vote. We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Row call please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, February 9th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Motion by Kraft, seconded by Boyle. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning, Dr. Foxall.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, yeah, before you, the board report for the month of February 2016. Enclosure, number one, administrative services. We're eight months into the fiscal year and bit over budget, but I think that will straighten itself out as we move further into the balance of the fiscal year. Enclosure number two, community corrections. As you can see, we had a visit from some of the commissioners and U.S. Representative Brad Ashford and his district director, Madam McGeal Johnson, to the Veterans Housing Unit in February. It was a very good visit. I think it was very insightful for those who were able to attend, and we continue to build additional partnerships. I think as more people find out about what we're doing with the Veterans Housing Unit, more people call in, volunteer services. So, I think this is really turning out to be quite a successful program, even though we're in its infancy. As it evolves, I will continue to keep you informed as to the positive momentum of the program. Also, we are continuing to build progress with the content for Corrections Network. We have, the delivery system is set up, as you know, and we have some free educational offerings that we are currently loading up to the server. So, this is going to be a go pretty soon. We're just getting to some of the final ducks in a row, and we will showcase that as soon as we're live. But, very excited about that opportunity as well. Twenty-four-seven program, had 14 admissions in February. We were 97 participants in the program during the month of February, which is a new high for the program. Two thousand six hundred and seventy breath tests were conducted, and there were 11 positive tests for alcohol use, and there were nine no-shows. Given the twice-a-day visits by 97 people, those are pretty good numbers. Overall compliance was 99.3 percent with the program, so we're very excited about that. Thirty-three, 30 individuals, excuse me, were monitored for a total of 811 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows to download, insofar as violations were concerned, one tampering, two alcohol violations. Overall SCRAM compliance was 99.6 percent. So, those numbers still look very good. Work release. There were 46 individuals admitted. They participated in 610 hours of community service, prevalent private charitable organizations. House arrest, admitted 104 individuals. They contributed 605 hours of community service. Reentry assistance program, 24 individuals were admitted, and those individuals, amongst those individuals, one attained his GED. Community corrections or in-house programs. Forty-nine individuals were admitted to the program. And again, another individual attained his GED. So, that's two for the month, and that's not the numbers where we were before the program changed over, but again, we're moving in a positive direction, so we're happy about that as well. Pretrial services, 28 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, 328 bed days were saved, 252 individuals were placed on pretrial release, 858 were managed with a 95 percent compliance rate, and 261 individuals visited the law library during the month of February. That bullet point actually should come under in-house corrections programs, so it's not a pretrial service function, it's in-house program. So, I apologize, it's a little out of place for that bullet. Enclosure number three, we don't have any reports at this time. Closure number four, personnel, training staff. As of the writing of this report, we're prepared to receive a class of 26 new hire candidates. March 7th, which was yesterday, those individuals did arrive, they had their first full day. Douglas County Corrections down in the Training Academy. Today is day number two. We're excited about having them onboard, so we need to increase our numbers. And I will keep you posted on their graduation date and their transition to the FTO program, and ultimately, on their own. Also, I would like to take special note of the fact that staff for several years now have participated in the Special Olympics Polar Plunge at Lake Cunningham. Now, I will tell you that I was present for the last two years, and, but I was present at the last two, to give them good support. But, for the individuals that actually went into the water, gentlemen?
You didn't get wet, I'm guessing.
Well, you know, as Director, I think it was important for me to make sure, supervise the folks that went into the water, and make sure everything was okay, so...
My question is, why didn't you throw them in?
So, Officer Morgan, Officer Beasley, I would like to really extend congratulations to them for organizing this, and the genesis of this has been many years coming. They're going to produce a little PowerPoint for you and discuss a little bit of the history about it. But, I just wanted to take a moment in time today to recognize them. And there's some other folks that kind of, the support behind this, that, a little camera shy, didn't come today, but they're brave and they're here this morning, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Officer Morgan.
Thank you. As Dr. Foxall said, I prepared a little slideshow for your viewing pleasure.
Good. Yeah, you're appreciating you're not inviting us.
Actually, we'll get to that. I want to start off by thanking you for the opportunity. I'll take any opportunity I can to talk about Special Olympics. It's near and dear to my heart.
Right.
The polar bear plunge is kind of unique. It's the winter fundraising event for the Special Olympics. Everybody's got a different reason for wanting to participate. Jumping in a hole, cutting a frozen lake in February is a unique ask. For myself, I have one main reason. This is my sister, Karen Elizabeth. She's been competing for over 20 years. When most people think of the law enforcement torch run, they have a vision in their head, a group of officers escorting a Special Olympian with the torch. Us, however, for the past decade, we've been doing the polar bear plunge. We've raised money, take contributions. We'll even Shanghai a person from time to time to come take the plunge with us. We have a lot of fun with it. We get there early, set up, have our little tailgate.
Oh, my goodness.
But, when push comes to shove, it's about getting in the water. Like I said, we've had a number of people come out, they'll stop by, they'll say hi, wish us luck, ask us if we're crazy. And we very well may be, a little bit. The main objective, though, is to raise money for Special Olympics. The law enforcement torch run initiated primarily as a running event, so it's mostly associated with Summer Games and things like that. That's from this year. It's not always easy to smile in the club. So, the polar bear plunge gives us an opportunity to carry on a year-round fundraising. Like I said, we've had some notable people stop by the tailgate, and we've Shanghai'd a couple to join us. You might know this person. It's our intention to continue to do this. The guys that come out, they have a lot of fun. I have a list of people that I go to regularly, but all of it comes down to making these moments happen, all right? For me, it's very personal. It's a family thing. It's my mom, my dad, my kids, all participating, either as volunteers or in unified Special Olympic events. Like I said, I'll take any opportunity I get to talk about it, because I think it's a great organization. When Special Olympics was founded by Eunice Kennedy Shriver, it generated from intellectual disability individuals just participating in sporting events in her backyard, okay? Before it became what it is now, what it's evolved to. You know, when the first Special Olympics, at Soldier Field in Chicago in 1968, you know, you had a total of, I think there were somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000, 1,500 athletes competing from all 50 states and Canada. And now, they extend out to every corner of the earth. I mean, there's over 140 countries involved in Special Olympics, and every one of those countries has a law enforcement torch run. And they will send a representative to World Games. I personally participated in the state games. Some of you may remember in 2010, the state games were here in Lincoln. I got the opportunity. Those are some motivated guys. Guys like Beasley here with me now, Sergeant Corbett, Sergeant Piper, Officer Lane, Officer Larkin, these guys, they love it, they keep it alive, and they just have the biggest hearts. I can't thank these guys enough for getting what I started, keeping it going, jumping onboard with what I thought was, nobody's going to agree to this, everybody's going to think I'm crazy, and most people did. But, I don't care how crazy you are, give me your money. I'm going to take your money and I'm going to send it back to Special Olympics. Not afraid. I'm shameless in that regard. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And next February, look for us. Come on by, get a hamburger, have a hot dog, and maybe you'll catch the bug.
Say, why don't you come on by so we can shake your hand? This is really something, both you fellows, and I think this is terrific. Congratulations, I had no idea you were doing this. That's wonderful. Boy, that's great, you dragged you into it. That's great. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
I'll cover that.
Yeah, let's go.
Not me.
Jump in cold water.
Have a casket.
I'll tell you, these guys take care of you at the beginning of it and after it. I mean, they know how to tailgate, if you know what I mean. And it's really, it's really not that bad. It would be a good training, volunteer firefighter, for you. A little encouragement there. No, they do, they do a great job. And you're going in next year.
You know, you catch me on camera. You know what? I will commit, I will commit to go in next year.
All right.
I will do that. I'll do that. Little details, details.
I'll be dragging you.
Okay, all right. I will see those of you in the back row, too. The invitation is also open to you.
And to everybody out there.
Yeah. But, I wanted to bring up, those guys have been not looking for any recognition or anything, they just do it, and I think he explained very eloquently why they do it, and those are some of the little things that kind of keep the Corrections family together and moving forward. And I think it's important to let some of the other folks know what are the things correction officers engage in. And there's a lot of positive things that they do, and there's something else that we'll bring to the board next week, or, excuse me, next month. So, thank you for the time for that. Moving on with the board report.
Commissioner Kraft, did you have something on that?
Yes.
On the whole report, when you're done.
Okay. And Commissioner Boyle, did you have?
I just want to say that, thanks, Sam. I just want to say that these men and the other jumpers in the water represent really the, if I could say, typical workers at correction, the people who are dedicated to their jobs, dedicated to communities. This is a very important event. Ann and I have, she comes from a large family. We have a nephew who's autistic, we have a brother, I have a brother-in-law who's severely disabled and can't participate in this event. So, what you do is really great, and you represent the very best of the employees.
Yep, very good, very well said.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to closure number five, respective staff overages, there's nothing additional to report this month. Closure number six, with regard to our population, have also, for ease of viewing, incorporated the population chart, graph form in the back, but we had 1,408 admissions last month, 1,398 releases, or ADP, or average daily population was 1,081, population's up. Marshall population was decreased, ICE population's up, pretrial population down, Mr. Vina population was down, female population's really high. In fact, there were, earlier, a few days ago, we had four female housing units open, three big ones and an overflow. H was open, which is usually, H was our overflow of two big housing units open. So, we had three big housing units open and overflow into H. We were, I think we peaked a few days ago, around 191 females. Usually, years pass, we've been under 100, so we're around about 10 percent of our population, so the female population has just exploded. And that's something we need to continue to monitor going into subsequent years. Closure number seven, respective medical, had 1,223 intake screenings, H and Ps, 428 discharge referrals, 595. Closure eight, continuing, mental health, 47 psych assessments, initial, initial mental health assessments, 124, mental health infirmary placements, 47, referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych, 23, mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment program, 224, mental health therapy, 23, and long-term psych, one. And you can see our, if you look at the graphs, that our mental health numbers, diagnosis, inmate diagnosis and psych meds are continuing to rise. Our mental health and co-occurring disorders, treatment referrals is down a little bit. Our homeless population's down a little bit, but our population is really, you look, well, your population's down, well, you have to look at some of the average length of stay and some of the people who are most acute and increases the average length of stay. So, while we may have some decrease in some particular demographics, the acuity level with respect to medical needs and the mental illness are up, and continue to occupy a lot of our concern and a lot of our time. Other questions?
Commissioner Kraft?
On the enclosure number two, where you're talking about the veterans unit, and you said many free educational offerings have been loaded onto the system. Are these offerings only available for the veterans, or are they available for the entire population?
Entire population. We put a second, we put a second monitor in each of the housing units and community corrections, and those will be supported, the programming through the server will be pushed into those second monitors in the housing units, so everybody.
And are they being well-received by the populations?
We're not fully live yet.
Okay.
Once we go live, then I'll be able to report the feedback.
Thank you.
Right now, we're putting announcements on, banners, self-help stuff, referral numbers for people that are releasing, did you know type of information on the banners running across those, and those are updated frequently, so as soon as we've got the programming lined up, then that's the next, that's the next phase.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I wanted to ask you, the page isn't numbered, that's a plea to number the pages, but it's the inmate mental health diagnosis and psychiatric medications graph. It's, I don't know how to explain it, it's in that section that you just discussed.
Yes.
I'm curious about the red line that says diagnosed mental illness incarcerated. Those are people who have been diagnosed with mental illness, but they're, and they are incarcerated.
Yes.
Okay, talk a little bit about that. Who's a, who is one, who's, what kind of person is that? Who is it?
That could range anywhere from an individual with PTSD to bipolar, schizophrenia. If you take a look at the pyramid paragraph, that gives you a breakdown of who those individuals are.
So...
It's got psychosis, bipolar, depression, anxiety, adjustment disorder.
Are they in the general population?
Yes. Not all. Some, some are in infirmary, some are in GP.
We're heading for...
And some are in restrictive housing.
Pardon me?
And some are in restrictive housing, which is my highest custody level.
So, we're heading towards some kind of resolution of this, aren't we?
Hope so.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't remember the female inmate population being that high, I'm just wondering, are you staffed? I mean, the unique needs of that, are you adequately staffed to handle that many?
We did not anticipate the population being this high at this time of the year when we put the budget together. In fact, I was anticipating 980, 970, something like that, at this time of the year, and we've been as high as, we've been over 1,100, and, which is really, I think, 1091, 1,100, and which is really unusual for this time of the year, and certainly not with having opened up additional female housing units, and then having opened up one of the big 64-bed housing units for females. No, did not anticipate that. That's why we've got a class of 26 coming on, try to keep up. So, we're finding a couple of things. Our attrition's a little bit higher, and I think I spoke to you with other departments, pulling from our staff, and with our population driving up, there's a couple of things that are really concerning as we sit down to prepare the budget for '16, '17. Are these numbers going to sustain? For the last few years, our numbers have been holding fairly constant, but this is, I hope this is an anomaly. If it's not, we're going to have to staff up to higher numbers, and I may have to deal with that in the '16, '17 budget.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Mark, what are the opportunities to increase pretrial? I mean, I'm assuming, if I read, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right, so of those, only 30 percent of those come in or released, are there any opportunities to increase the pretrial program and those out to relieve pressure in there?
Well, one of the things that we, several years ago, we did to try to address the pretrial population was the reentry assistance program, and I think that's working well. You know, the difference between a few years ago, when we were looking at the reentry assistance program, and now, there's a different kind of person coming into the facility, and I was speaking about that every month, I think the mental illness and the violent nature of the crimes that we see coming in have changed in the last three to five years. So, we're sitting down to take a look at that again, and it's a process that we're going to have to work with. It's evaluating the risk and the needs, and I think with, actually, it's a pretty good segue into the grant that is on the agenda for this morning, is people say, well, what's your population look like? What are your needs? Well, you see my report every month, we're booking 14, 15, 1600 people a month, what's a lot of folks coming in the door? And you say, well, what do you need? I say, well, what I need is to figure out, have a good idea of what it is coming in the door, so then I could build the needs beyond that. And this, the grant from Sherwood Foundation, is going to help us begin the process of identifying the needs of the people that come in. And if we can do that, then we can then begin to start thinking about some different outlets for the pretrial release population, because really, folks, two-thirds of our population are pretrial detainees. And we've got about 140 or so sentenced people, okay? And we have very good programs for the sentenced population, but for the pretrial population, we still need to drill down into that population and figure out what's the risk, what are the needs, and then how can we outlet them in either different parts of the jail or to community-based services? So, this Sherwood grant that's on the agenda for today is going to be a first big step in really giving me a good snapshot of what's coming in to the jail, and we build the needs and programming beyond that component.
So, are you all drilling into the pretrial population data-wise to get some more profile?
We're going to test, we're, through this grant, we're going to assess everybody coming in the door. And we've got University of Nebraska lined up as part of the evaluation of this effort to tell us what are, what the needs of our population are coming in the door.
So, you'll be able to, where they're coming from?
Yes.
Probably, okay.
Yes.
So, did you, are you making a, I inferred from your statement that you're making a correlation between some of the mental health population and pretrial?
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely. The issue's going to be capacity in the community. Once we identify what the needs are, are there providers in the community that we can refer these folks to?
Okay.
That's phase probably three, but there's a couple of committees that I'm on now that we are talking about that as we speak. So, and I think I've told some of you this, one of the exciting things about where we're at today is people are all across the country in key policymaking positions are talking about the needs of individuals that suffer from substance abuse and mental illness. So, it's a long way from where we were three years ago, so we're making progress. But, coming upon me then to identify with particular detail what that need is, and then refer those folks out, because remember, we're in jail, we're a short-term facility, theoretically speaking, and they're coming right back out to the community. So, they either come out with some type of diagnosis... So they either come out with some type of diagnosis and connect with a provider, or they just come out, and the latter is, as far as I'm concerned, unacceptable.
What's the cost per day, ninety dollars approximately? Do you have some hard in regards to the amount of time a person is sitting there pre-trial, taking up time compared to what it would cost outside, treatment-wise? I mean, I hear rough ones, but do you have some hard on that?
Yeah, I can give you the numbers on the, what the cost is as they sit in secure custody, but in terms of if we, if they're released to the outside, what that cost is, it depends. It depends on, you know, if it's substance abuse, it depends on if it's mental health, and then it depends on, if you take a look at that pyramid, where do you fall in that, that pyramid from adjustment disorder all the way to psychosis? So do you need inpatient care? Do you need outpatient care? It's quite a range.
Okay.
And that, and that cost is tied to the range of need that you would require post-release.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
I wanted to ask you about, on page eight, the, under the inmate account purchases and reimbursements, charges for telephones are four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred thousand, or excuse me, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. What's the situation with inmate telephone calls? I know the FCC has come down pretty hard on some things, this figure seems pretty high.
FCC has, has come down, and those rules are slated to take effect in June. GTL, one of the big providers in the, in the country, just yesterday issued a stay of the FCC order, so we'll see where that goes. Excuse me, I said that wrong. The attorneys that are here, the FCC, no, excuse me, GTL requested a stay.
The ACLU?
The GTL, one of the big phone providers.
Oh, I see, okay.
Requested a stay, and the FCC, that's been granted by the courts, so it stays, the FCC ruling for now.
Okay. All right. There's something else I hesitate bringing up, but I will anyway naturally. Douglas County, I believe, is on the list of being a sanctuary county along with Sarpy and Hall, and maybe Lancaster, and Sarpy kinda had a run-in on that recently. We're still on pretty good ground. I mean, I think Sarpy's doing the right thing, as are we. We discussed this, because what it amounts to is that immigration asking us to hold people without charges, and that's, you can't do that in the United States. People have to be charged, you can't just say you're staying in the jail. The only place that happens apparently is Guantanamo Bay, so I just, I wanna make sure that we're, we're doing everything right, that we're not gonna find ourselves in a situation like Sarpy is right now. I think they're gonna come out okay, but I believe they're involved in litigation, aren't they?
I'm not sure where they're at in that, in that respect, but I can tell you that we've had conversations with county attorney's office, county attorney's office with respect to how we move forward in that arena.
Okay, okay. And I, you know, I, if someone's here who is undocumented, then I think it's the responsibility of ICE to take care of that. We, we can't hold somebody that's not been charged with any, with anything.
If ICE, if ICE has the appropriate paperwork...
Right.
Then we will detain, we will hold, we will hold the person, if that person is identified, we will hold them. But it has to be the appropriate paperwork.
Thank you.
Mark, can you, you don't have to go through them today, but provide a list of, with our increase in the female population, what are the top five offenses that they're there for? If you know, or if you can get that, I would appreciate you sending that out to us.
I'll do that.
And then the only reason I ask that is because maybe we need to then take a look at the programs in which we're offering to the females, since we're seeing such an increase, and see if we need to make some adjustments to those possibly, so...
I will say methamphetamine is a precursor to a lot of offenses that we see females involved in.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
I'm through.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'm just wondering, so is the, is the, yesterday, today's population seemed normal, I guess, in the seventies, but there was a period like last week where it was like seventy-six is seventy-eight. Is that female-related or what was the?
Females.
And just throwing out ideas, one of the things that I talked to you guys when we were doing that tour for the vets is I've been doing a lot of reading, and meditation and yoga are actually very good programs to maybe implement within, and we could try it within the female mod, so if we could maybe look at that and see if we could come up with something. And then, two things on the mental health, as you know, the National Association have the stepping up initiative on the national level to address the mental health and jails issue across the country, 'cause it's just not us, obviously, that are seeing this problem. So we submitted an application to be a part of that initiative, and we were chosen as one of the counties to go, and so that's next month, so we're kind of excited to go and see what everybody else is doing and saying about this. And then Commissioner Rogers and I were invited to Miami-Dade to Sally Hayman, who is a commissioner down there. She's putting on, they've done phenomenal things. Commissioner Boyle talks about Judge Leifman all the time, and he's going to do a day-and-a-half type of program down there, actually, it's this month, so that should be intriguing as well. And then I mentioned this, and I don't, I mentioned it kind of like in my dream, this is what I would envision or hope that maybe we can sit down and talk about. It was announced last week that the Greyhound bus or Burlington Trailways is potentially going to be moving down to the Amtrak station, and if that does, the question was posed as to what would we do with that property? And one of the things that we've talked about in addressing this is really how do we address the mental health issues in the jail population? And one of the things is that we could actually use that site as a mental health facility for the jail, but then we could also collaborate with our Five East folks and have them right there on our, on that location too, because there's so much cooperation and collaboration going on with them. So I only throw that out there as one of those dreams that maybe we could just kinda talk about. I know it would take a couple of years to look at and plan, and ultimately, there'd probably have to be a bond issue and all of that, but I, I really seriously believe that if we want to, if, if we want to be able to provide what is really needed for these individuals that are kind of sitting in our jail, they're getting the best that they can while they're there, but could we do more? And so I just throw that out, that, out there, Commissioner Boyle, especially for you as Chair of the Corrections, that maybe we can kinda further those discussions a little bit and maybe just throw something down on paper and say, let's dream, let's dream what this could be if we really, really wanted to address that here. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I really agree. I'm enthusiastic. When we were exchanging emails about the Greyhound property, you suggested that, and I think that's a, really a terrific approach and a great use of that building. So I, I'm very much in favor. A couple of other things that I've talked to the Director about that are kinda off the wall are, I'd like to see us have some relationship with a company that services vehicles, garages, and I'd like to get, I know that we have people for pretty short term, but get them into a garage, make, doing oil changes, doing tires, getting a skill, and at the same time, what I'd like to see is our general assistance people, whatever they're called, I'd like to have them be access, have access to that. I don't know about you, but where I live, I see a lot of cars by the side of the road with a hood up, and usually an African-American woman standing next to the car, it's broken down, and what's she supposed to do? I think, you know, I mean, it triggers so many other problems, childcare, jobs, you know, all that kinda stuff unravels when you don't have good transportation. And I think there's something, that would be a service that would really make sense, a towing service and then a garage where people are learning to work on vehicles under some leadership, and then servicing vehicles that otherwise would not be serviced, or else, I mean, just to me, it's something that makes some sense. The other thing too, that Anne and I were in Arizona last winter for about a week with one of her sisters, and we went to a restaurant that a majority of the employees were, had Down Syndrome, and, who were incredibly friendly, just did a terrific job, and supported the waitstaff, and it was really fun to go there, and it was put together by a couple of teachers who work with the young, young men and women who are, who have Down Syndrome and other difficulties, and they're performing very well, living independently and so forth. Something like that, I'd like to see us even do maybe a restaurant for, you know, some of our inmates, the men and women. We ought to open up a bakery. I mean, there's so many, so much potential to get them into some livelihood. Anyway, I'm, I'm real optimistic, and I really appreciate the attitude of the Chair thinking and supporting these things. It's just terrific having your leadership bringing these things up.
Commissioner Morgan?
When I saw the emails, when does Greyhound move out of it?
We don't know for sure. It's, they're paid to the end of this month, I believe, and then it could potentially happen.
I was gonna suggest that once they're out, let's maybe meet down there, walk through some of us that are interested, see what some of it is, and I think we have our Director from the Health Department, some others here, you know, if somebody has other ideas, we gotta listen. I think the mental health idea is a great one, but I think all of us can use the support of others to give input. Mr. Foxall, you know, ideas you might have or what you see in the future, hey, maybe now we should do this, but five years from now, I think we're gonna need it for this, so that we make some goals, a strategic plan for that facility, and if there is a plan right now, then we ought to talk about that, if the majority agree, we move toward it and see how that can fit in.
You know, Commissioner Rogers and I had actually met with a company, that was from Minnesota, weren't they? And it was right along the lines of what you were exactly saying, and they provide a living space and then programming and then a job opportunity. So they partnered with someone in the community to be able to bring the individuals to learn that industry, why they were staying at this place. And we actually looked at the old Emmanuel Nursing Home Facility up there off of Thirty Thirty Names, and we put in a grant, and we didn't get it, but it was one of the, we've talked with Dr. Poor about food, what's the word called? Food, huh?
Food preparation?
Desert, well, and then the, being able to recoup the food and do something with it, and maybe we could partner with Metro. I mean, you were so right on of discussions that maybe we need to kinda bring back to the table and talk about, and could do it with a lot of willing partners within the community to maybe take a look at that again. But it was a really good model that we looked at, we just, again, didn't have the dollars to do anything with it, so...
Well, that, the resolution that we approved a while back, that tech hire resolution, we got a meeting Fri-, it's Friday, so I think I need to move that, but there's some talk between these coding jobs that are instantly putting people there, and we just, I got a meeting set between Mark, myself, the Urban League, and a young lady named Shannon Dorsey to talk about that. They're interested, we just need to put it together to see where it would go.
Good, all right. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I love the idea. The only thing is, I don't think it's big enough. It's been years since I've been in. I think we need something six, eight, ten times the size of this facility. Now, it does have room to expand on that lot, and of course, we own the parking lot next to it, we would just most likely have to follow city code and replant it, but I don't think the facility as it stands, without millions of dollars' worth of renovation, is gonna cut it.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, are you thinking of a building at Sixteenth and Leavenworth? You're downtown and you love it?
No, I'm not.
I know, I know you were, but I know you were, but I was, it's catty corner from, from the facility. I wanna just briefly mention, you know, years ago, in the, inside the walls of the Minnesota State Penitentiary, a company called Three M opened up a manufacturing plant. They were, they were doing computer disks and so forth inside, they had a factory inside the walls, and I mean, I just can't think of anything better. I ran into, while I was campaigning, I was at Holy Ghost Fish Fry, and I sat down, shoved my way into a table with strangers, and I started, I got an earful from a man whose son is in the penitentiary down in Tecumseh, and he talked about his son having nothing, nothing to do. There's no programming, and I don't know how accurate that is, but I would believe him, he had a no. And he was talking about how devastating this is to the people who are incarcerated, and I think there was just another, another incident there yesterday. So we don't have control over that, but people need to be much more sensitive and tuned into, because these people, for, the folks that are in our facility are our neighbors. They are people who were picked up for shoplifting, they're there for DUI, you know, they're gonna be back in our community, and they've hit a bump in the road, and if we don't pay attention to that, it's just going to exacerbate, it's gonna get a lot worse. So anyway, I think we have great opportunities to do some things, and I'm glad to hear the Board is thinking along those lines.
How that we've given our Finance Director a heart attack behind us, and our staff heart attacks. But again, I mean, that's really how stuff gets done, is throwing stuff out there and then seeing what we can do with it. So we, we know it all takes money and time and partnering, but it's something that I think is, is doable to at least map out and see what it would take to get it done.
Well, our, our population's changing, and I've spoken to that from months on in now. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. And I failed to mention too, last month, that we completed our second Crisis Intervention Team training class, and we've got two more scheduled for this year. So, you know, I've spoken to this in previous reports, that my intention is to continue to push the training on the mental health side, so our staff are best equipped to deal with the changing population, but there's only so much you can do with respect to training. And there's a lot of difficult people coming through that door that suffer from mental illness, and they don't belong there. They don't belong in the community either, some, some do, some don't, but I think it's an appropriate conversation to have with respect to a forensic mental health unit, because now you have so many different people locally, regionally, and nationally talking about it. So the momentum is there to continue the discussion and have some really thoughtful conversations about, you know, what do we do moving forward, and what does something like this look like in partnership with the community in which we live? So I think the time is now, so I, you brought it up, so glad that you did, so I'm gonna keep talking about what you brought up, so...
Well, you brought up something on the CIT training.
Yes.
You probably don't know, but maybe Diane might know. Do we know if our nine-one-one operators have had CIT training?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Could we ask Mr. Hanson if they have? Because, Mark, that may be a department that we want to partner with, to ask them to come to the training sessions as well.
Sure.
Which I know it would add, add more, but I think that again is one of those things that people are talking a lot about, that they're the first responders, so to speak, with the calls, and that may be helpful to them to have that training.
By hosting our own training on our own site, we can, we control the seats, so we can certainly do that.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, well, very good. Any suggestions further? That's good stuff.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you guys for coming today. You'll see us all next year. You'll see us all next year.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kraft, seconded by Duda, please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, and item 1B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, March 8th, 2016.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Morgan, seconded by Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the consent agenda, items A through I. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it. Excuse me, Chair Borgerson?
Yes.
A, you can't vote on A and B1 because they kind of contradict one another, so I would ask that you take A out and vote on that one separately. They're both dealing with the same bid.
So take out A and B?
Uh, B1.
B1?
Yep.
Okay, so it's the, is the motioner okay and the secondor okay?
Yes.
And then you had a question, Commissioner Boyle?
I need to abstain on D, so I'd like to have that pulled out.
Hold that out, okay. So we have a motion to approve all except for A, B and D. Commissioner Rogers made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I have a question on C, resolution accepting the reentry case management program grant. It doesn't have a dollar amount in there and I was wondering what fiscal impact that would have on Douglas County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see, let me get that. So I apologize for not giving you a final dollar amount on this. I'm Carrie Davis, I'm the grant coordinator. This is a three-year grant and the total budget is $1,754,668 over three years.
It's safe to say that.
I'm sorry?
No, she's looking. It's, it's basically a grant to help Corrections get into the case management mode of some of the people that are there to try to facilitate them when they get in and have the resource they get out. Or if they're there right now and that was what kind of this discussion we had about pretrial, this puts us in the realm to be able to find the resources outside instead of them sitting in there and us treating them. That, that's the heart of it.
Correct. And I do have some representatives from DCDC here that can answer programmatic questions. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the application or the award. The programmatic questions would be best answered by Justine, probably.
Yes, I'm primarily interested in those programmatic questions relative to the fiscal impact on Douglas County.
You want to give it a go?
If someone that can speak to that.
Dr. Becksel?
There's the budget right there for you.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Justine Wall, I'm the Reentry Programs Administrator. The program is to get social workers into Corrections. Right now, we have a very small percentage of people who receive programming just based on the resources and the budget that we have. As Mark spoke to earlier, we have about 18,000 bookings each year and that constitutes about 13,000 people. And we just do not have the resources to be able to touch that many people. So the program is based on getting social workers into admissions. They'll do an evaluation on them when they first enter the facility and then start reentry planning for them as soon as they get there. The budget is based on primarily hiring those personnel. There is a few equipment issues for computers and a case management software and the assessment piece. Sherwood is funding the entire project. After three years, we will look to both internal and external funding resources. Sherwood has indicated that after three years is, if this project is successful, they will continue to assist us. But our hopes are, is that we're going to see an impact and lower the recidivism, which is going to save the county in the end. And that's how we can further support the program as well.
All right, so if I understand the grant, it's three years, 100% Sherwood financed. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
At what amount per year?
It's a little bit different each year, but it, it's about $500,000 a year.
Okay, so the 1.7 million, I think, was the entire grant amount?
Correct.
Over the three years. And there's no Douglas County contribution during that period?
Not financial, correct. They'd be in-kind, so I would be supervising the program. So it's just personnel.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much of your time would be dedicated to supervising this program?
Not at this time.
And on the grant application, was there some indication of what the in-kind contribution of Douglas County would be during this period?
No.
Could you estimate that?
Uh, no, but I can probably get that information to you.
Okay. And the roughly $500,000 a year would involve the retention of additional staff?
Yes.
How many?
Um, well, it really depends on what we see as the outcomes. Right now, we are looking to hire eight people, seven bachelor level social workers and one licensed clinical social worker.
Okay.
So a total of eight personnel.
So at the end of the three-year funding cycle?
Mm-hmm.
When the Sherwood money is reduced, it doesn't go away, right?
The what?
The Sherwood grant, at the end of three years, is it renewed? Does it go away? Is it reduced?
They didn't commit to anything. They told us that based on the, what goals we have and the outcomes of those goals, that they would evaluate it.
Okay. So for purposes of planning, in three years, what happens to those eight employees?
Well, again, it really depends on the outcomes. If we see that the program is not successful, then we would have to reevaluate those positions to see if it's fiscally sound to keep those positions.
Okay, say it is valuable, then what happens?
Well, then, we would look to internal or external funding, one being Sherwood, as they indicated, they would continue to assist us. And then, you know, we've been very successful at applying for grants in the last few years, so we would obviously look for more opportunities for grant funding. And then also, based on if the recidivism is going down and we're closing housing units or saving money and that those, the money that we save can be applied towards keeping the resources that are helping the recidivism stay lower.
Dr. Foxall, do you have anything to add?
Actually, I think Ms. Wall pretty much covered it and the only thing I would add is as we staff up to, to deal with the large number of people coming in, you know, a lot of our population repeat individuals, so we may not need as much staff in year three as we do in year one. So that could change our numbers. But I really want to cede upon the last point that she made and that is if we are able through this effort to close housing units, and we're not doing that today, as I told you, then we could shift some of that cost from running a housing unit at about a thousand plus dollars a day to the programmatic side of the house. And so that's really what we're kind of looking forward to.
And I, and you know, I think that's a very good idea. So if I understand correctly, if this program is successful over the next three years and we can show empirically that it has reduced our population, we can then monetize that reduction into savings to Douglas County that in the event of the Sherwood grant going away, could balance the assumption by Douglas County of the eight employees or however many employees. Is that correct? Is that the reasoning?
That's, that's one approach that we're taking, yes. And, but as you know, there's so many different things that influence our, our population. L.B. 605 being one of them. And, and what's available in the community, it's going to be a great thing to determine what the needs are coming in, but then we've got to find places in the community that can accept, assist the individuals that we identify through this effort. So you, you create one issue by create, identifying a need, but then you've got to stay with the concept, go out into the community and talk to the external stakeholders to make sure that they have someplace to go and they are receiving the services necessary that will preclude them from a return to our facility.
So during the, the duration of this three-year grant, they would be working under your supervision, is that correct?
That's correct.
In the Department of Corrections?
That's correct.
Okay. Would it be possible then, as years go by, to get an annual report relative to the potential savings that we're talking about? So that we can anticipate, you know, at the end of three years, what's going to be the fiscal impact on Douglas County?
Absolutely. And as part of this, as part of this grant, I don't know, Ms. Wall mentioned that University of Nebraska and Omaha has signed on as an evaluator. So Kiwett's going to require, or excuse me, Sherwood's going to require an annual report from us and the University of Nebraska and Omaha School of Criminology or Criminal Justice is going to provide that as well. So empirically, we will be gathering data and gathering and analyzing data before the program even begins. So I will have that information for you, yes.
Very good. And the, the in-kind contribution during this three-year grant, is there any way to more precisely estimate that in terms of Douglas County's in-kind contribution?
Yes, I can have Ms. Wall, Mike Myers, do that, yes.
Great, thank you. So it's a good idea, excited.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just wanted to thank the Sherwood Foundation for what they're doing. This is great and, you know, we can assess it, get updates. It's a real positive. And I know the Sherwood Foundation does some other fine things in our community and on behalf of the community, just like to thank the Sherwood Foundation. And this is really outstanding, I think.
This is huge for us. I don't know that we've ever received a grant of this, of this magnitude. So this, this is really huge for us and we're very excited about the opportunity in, in the first three years and, and because it sets the stage for what we're going to do beyond.
Right.
And it really, really sets the stage for providing better, more particular services to the inmate population.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, PJ already took the words out of my mouth, but I do want to add my, my glowing support for this, this grant. Because if it works, then the chances are we'll get continued funding. But not only that, but the Sherwood Foundation is really changing lives all around our community. It's just unbelievable what that foundation has done. And so, you know, I, I really appreciate the work that Susie Buffett puts out and her staff. She sets the tone and she's really tuned in to the needs in the community and Sherwood Foundation steps up and we're very fortunate that they do and they will continue to do that. So this is a terrific opportunity for us.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, the Sherwood Foundation definitely is an asset. I don't think any other community has. While we were talking, I was thinking about the crisis in training seminars and teachings. And I wondered, when somebody knows they have a family member with a mental illness, is there a way we could provide training for the family in how to handle that? That in and of itself could save us a lot of money and save the family and society a lot of problems, just knowing how to react and when to react. So I just wanted to plant that seed. It doesn't need discussion now, just needs thought.
Okay, no other lights. Again, the consent agenda, there was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle for the consent agenda except for items A, B and D.
Commissioner Borgerson, real quick, did you just mean item B1?
B1, yes.
And then on, there's two items under D, what was the, was it both of them or just?
Both.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Give us one moment here and we'll... Okay, we're ready to go.
Please vote. We'll go back to item A, Mr. Eric Carlson, purchasing agent bid rejection. This is A1, rejection of all bids for the X-ray system for the Douglas County Health Center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There was a motion by Kraft, seconded by Boyle. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
So it's a vote yes to reject?
So you would reject them, but then can I have a question? I actually, but since item B kind of goes with it, that would go away then, right? If we're rejecting all bids? Item B would go away?
Yeah, you could either just not take action on it or you could take action to deny it. I mean, I don't know what would be, whatever the will of the board is.
Is it the action we're taking? Should we reject the bid?
Right, but then item B1 is the one, is one of the bids, so we just leave it, it just dies, right? Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. Please vote. Next is item D, Mr. Tom Doyle County Engineer requests approval for the following, the bid award with primary and secondary suppliers. And item D2, award contract to Old Castle Materials Midwest Company, Omni Engineering. Is there a motion to approve D1 and 2?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Duda, seconded by Kraft, please vote. Next are citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the Seeing none, we have one presentation, Healthy Vending in Douglas County presented by the Douglas County Health Department. And I'll let Dr. Poor and her staff talk about this. It's kind of exciting. It's like, we're moving.
Did you bring any ho-hos for us to eat? Pass out the ho-hos.
You know, and I actually, I report, Douglas County Health Department, and I have two of my staff here from the WIC program who have worked on this. And Megan is going to smile because when she showed me the presentation, I said, you know, and Commissioner Boyle is going to ask you here. So I had warned her about you.
Right off the bat.
I had warned her about you.
Thank you.
But anyway, this is a, a group that has gotten together for quite some time under the leadership of Commissioner Borgerson, really, to see what can we do as a county to increase healthy vending for our employees. Because, you know, it's easy to say, well, every big business should do A, B, C and T, but we need to be the example. And so what you are hearing today, Megan Carlson is the dietitian from our WIC program and Sarah Schramm is there, the supervisor of the WIC program. She'll show you a little bit of what she has presented to the Board of Health. The Board of Health actually then approved the resolution to bring this forward to county commissioners. We would then follow up with the resolution next week that potentially makes recommendation to our purchasing department, when they get into contract, into the bidding for a new vending contractor, that some of these recommendations are going to be in that bid. So we will include that and I think it's a very reasonable project. But I'd like Megan kind of explain, you.
Megan?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me some time to talk about the work that's been done and that I've been involved with in over the last year or so. And really is about increasing access to healthy foods specifically related to vending machines.
Yes.
So I have a few slides I'll go through here with you today. And first of all, just to give you a brief overview of why vending machines can be important to increase this access. Nationally, we know that obesity remains to be a major health issue and the CDC recognizes that while there are many environmental factors that can contribute to obesity, lack of access to healthy foods is one of them. The USDA also tells us that about 25% of our, of snacks provide about 25% of our calorie intake for a day. So we can see how increasing healthier options or healthier snacks can really have a direct impact on our daily caloric intake. So because of this, nationally, many government agencies as well as organizations and other institutions like schools and businesses and hospitals included have started to look at creating a more healthful environment for their employees and community members that... visit those locations. And one of the ways is by implementing some nutrition standards that can be held within their vending machines, and in turn, this helps to increase the availability of healthy options for the consumer. When we look at where we're at as a county, we know that it has been reported that about nearly seven out of 10 of the Douglas County residents are overweight or obese, and this is based on the 2014 BRFSS data that was self-reported. And as a county, we're really continuing to look at different ways to keep employees and citizens healthy. Douglas County has really implemented a variety of changes within the community to make healthy living possible, and we know that if the healthy option isn't available, healthy living can be very difficult. When we look at our Douglas County buildings and the environments, we know that vending machines are in most of those buildings, and sometimes they're the only access to food or food that is sold within those locations. So by increasing the number of some healthier choices within these vending machines, it can be one small step that we can do to support the health of our employees and citizens visiting. As I mentioned, Douglas County has continued to work on improving the health of the community, and this slide just shows a little overview of one of the goals of the Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties. And I know Commissioner Borgerson has been instrumental in bringing this initiative here to Omaha. I wanted to point out this slide because this shows Goal 4 within the Let's Move Goals, which relate directly to the offering and selling of food within county offices and buildings. And while this strategy may involve more, a little more than vending machines, our work with increasing healthy choices in vending machines is really a good first step in helping us to move forward within that goal. We're currently at bronze standings, and by implementing some nutrition guidelines, that would help us to move forward to silver and then hopefully eventually gold. So through some existing grant funds, the Douglas County Health Department staff has been able to start to look at this feasibility of what these guidelines would look like and how they could be incorporated. We began our work by including other partners, including some conversations with Commissioner Borgerson. We've had conversations with the Douglas County Purchasing Department, as well as the Wellness Committee, and even outside sources such as the UNL Extension. And some of the activities included assessing our current vending machines and being able to pilot some healthy options in one location. So over these next few slides, I'll just tell you a little bit more about these activities. The first activity that we were able to be a part of was being one in six local public health departments that participated in a statewide vending scan in Nebraska. Gretchen Swanson Center for Nutrition was the organization that completed these scans. They were onsite observations and assessments of what offerings were in the vending machines. And five of our Douglas County locations participated in this, and included here the Civic Center, the 911 Call Center, the Health Center, our Midtown Campus, and the Douglas County Youth Center. Gretchen Swanson used the NEMS-V, or the Nutrition Environmental Measure Survey Tool for vending, which really is just a point-in-time assessment that looks at all foods and assesses them using a stoplight approach. This slide here just shows kind of an overview of what that stoplight approach looks like, meaning green would be the healthiest choices. These are foods that would be less than 200 calories and meet specific standards for fat, sodium, and sugar. They are all consistent with dietary guidelines for Americans. Yellow choices would be the better choice in a machine. They also meet a lot of the dietary guidelines for Americans, but are a little bit higher in sodium. And any red choices would fall outside of those guidelines or recommendations and would really be the foods that we would encourage people to limit based on health. So just to give you an example of what a food would look like that would fall into these categories, we know one common snack in a vending machine may be a package of pretzels. And while this is definitely a healthier option than some foods, a one-ounce package of certain brands contain, can contain up to 450 milligrams of sodium. That would actually classify it as one of the red choices, and if we would compare that to a two-ounce package of baked potato chips, which has 115 milligrams of sodium and meets all of the other nutrition requirements, that would be something that we could encourage as a green or healthier choice. These nutrition standards can be important, too, because some foods can really be surprising to a consumer, and if you think about a vending machine, you're not able to look at the nutrition label before you purchase the item. For example, toasted veggie chips may appear to be a healthy option based on its name, but when we look at the nutrition facts, they can contain 230 calories, nine grams of fat, and 450 milligrams of sodium, so all of which would put it into the red category and be something that we would want the consumer to limit. So by having these nutrition standards in place, we can really help the consumer to identify the healthier option. We can label it on the machine so they know which choice is the healthier choice. Just briefly to discuss what beverages look like, the green or the healthiest choice of beverages using this tool would be water, 100% fruit or vegetable juice, and low-fat milk that is in less than a 12-ounce container. Anything typically over 40 calories or 400 milligrams of sodium would fall into the red category. So the Gretchen Swanson Center used this model and these standards when they came into our offices and looked at the vending machines. And the next slide just shows you a visual of how the five buildings rated using this NEMS-V tool. The first graph shows you all of the snack machines that were assessed. You can see the options for green and yellow were very limited, and I think the important thing to note here is they looked at nine vending machines. Out of nine machines, that yielded 348 snack options, so nearly 350 snacks, which in five buildings is an awful lot of choices for a consumer, yet only 10 of those choices met that green or healthiest criteria, so we can see that was limited. The second graph shows the beverage options available. There were 11 vending machines that they looked at and 126 options. Out of 126 options, only three met the green or the healthiest criteria within those buildings. So by kind of looking at this data, we were able to see that there could be some room for improvement without really limiting the choice, but really just making the healthy choice a little bit more readily available. So the next focus area that we looked at within our grant work was really just to determine how can we take those green or healthier choices and make that piece of the pie just a little bit bigger? And we did this by initially forming a healthy vending work group. We wanted to incorporate different levels within the county, just to get feedback and input from everybody. This included members of the Douglas County Health Department, Douglas County Purchasing, Commissioner Borgerson. We included members of the Douglas County Wellness Committee, who was very supportive, and again, UNL Extension. As a group, we were able to look at these results, and we decided to really just focus our efforts not on the green and yellow, but just those green, healthiest choices, as those are consistent with the Smarter Snack Standards, which is the USDA guidelines that are implemented in the school systems, and again, consistent with dietary guidelines for Americans. So that's really the science-based recommendations that we wanted to promote. Our next efforts were really to find a location out of those five and create a vending intervention and increase those amount of healthy choices, engage staff, and see how well this would go over in one of our buildings. The group determined our pilot site to be our Midtown Campus. Initially, we made contact with our current vendor to discuss implementing healthy choices, and from the beginning, they were very willing, even stating that 20 to 30% of the options in a machine is a feasible goal to make, to start with. After working with them to review what snack options they had available, they were able to immediately put in six of healthier choices that met those green criteria, which made our machine a close to 15% healthy vending. Those choices were baked chips, pop chips, light popcorn, granola bars, fruit cups packed in 100% juice. During this month-long pilot, we had many strategies really to engage staff and increase the awareness and promote these items. First, we completed a pre-survey, and out of roughly just over 100 employees at that campus, 38 completed the survey. About 40% of them said that they really rarely visit the vending machine at all, yet 90% said that they would be more likely to if healthy options were available. So we knew that we had the desire for the staff as well. During this time, we held two taste testing events in which the vendor was able to donate some snacks that we could promote to the employees. We had 70 employees attend that and had really positive feedback from them. Most employees stated that they were happy to see some healthier options available, and they would really be more likely to use the vending machines now. This next slide just shows some different promotional and marketing strategies we used to increase awareness. We did this by emailing staff, putting posters up in different locations, break rooms. We also did some brain busters in which we tried to use this opportunity to also educate staff on why we were promoting a healthier choice by comparing the calories in a traditional snack versus a healthier option. We had some prize incentives for them participating in this, which was donated by our Wellness Committee. We did a newsletter article, and we also placed some clings on the vending machine, which they could help staff to identify what the healthier choice was when they went there. Following this pilot, which was a month-long, a second vending work group was held this January, in which we discussed some information on this pilot, and as a group, we really felt it was important to come up with a framework or those guidelines, as we would hopefully continue to work with the vendor and work with the purchasing department. We just wanted to outline what the nutrition standards were we wanted to promote, as well as a feasible goal, and how we can move this forward into additional county offices. So collectively, the group came up with some recommendations that we felt may work well within the county, and this next slide shows those recommendations. The snacks and beverages are listed, again, consistent with those Smarter Snack Standards with the USDA. Any snack less than 200 calories, meeting the specific criteria for fat, saturated fat, sodium, and sugar, would qualify as a healthy choice. Nuts and seeds would be exempt because of their healthy fats that are promoted in those products. And for beverages, we'd want to promote water, low-fat milk, and 100% juice in less than 12-ounce containers. We also included recommendations for a phased-in approach, and this was something that through research with other communities, we've, and through work with our vendor, really found that that works well. It gives the time for the consumer and for the vendor to really adapt to change. And so the next slide I have just kind of gives a little visual of what that looks like. So a phased-in approach would look like year one would have, 15% of the vending machine would have healthy options. I found that most vending machines holds an average of around 40 snacks, sometimes a little bit less. But if we looked at a vending machine with 40 options, that would be six choices that would be available on that machine that would meet those nutrition standards. Year two would increase these choices by just four, so, and that would be 25% of the machine would be healthy options. And our end goal of 35% at the end of three years would have a machine that holds 40 options, 14 of those would meet the nutrition standards or those healthier choices. So per discussions with the vending work group, we just felt like these recommendations would help to increase these healthy options, really without limiting or taking away a lot of the traditional options that we do see in the vending machines. So as Dr. Poor had mentioned, to date, we've presented this information to the Board of Health, and they've accepted the Healthy Vending Resolution to bring this forward to you. We felt it was very important to share with the Board of County Commissioners and hope to continue our work with the Douglas County Purchasing Department and the vendor to increase access to healthy foods through vending machines in Douglas County Office, and really making the healthy choice the easy choice for the consumer. So, thank you very much for your time and allowing me to share this collaboration of work in regards to increasing access to healthy foods.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft?
A couple, just a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
So much of the snack food nowadays is being packaged in 100-calorie packs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you going to be having the calorie count listed in front of the thing, or are you going to say 100-calorie snacks and hone in on that? Or are you just going to do the red, green, yellow?
For this project, we looked at any snack we would promote would fall within those guidelines of less than 200. So if it was 100 calories, it would still be promoted the same as any other choice that may be 200 calories. However, a lot of those snacks and a lot of the changes on a national level with labeling and labeling acts, they are starting to put some of that information on the front of the package, which can also, the consumer can see, too. So I think that is helpful in them seeing that while it meets the choice of less than 200 calories, it's even less than that.
Okay, but you're not going to take where the price is and put the calorie count on that?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'm joking about the ho-hos, but...
No, you're not.
I was, I'm really disappointed. Here's the deal, I'm curious, you know, you showed that, you know, the green is great, the yellow's so-so, and the red is no deal. One of the things that I have trouble with, and I just bought some cereal the other day, some Wheat Jacks, I like them, and I look at the side and look at the calories and all this sort of stuff that's in there. And, but you know, it'd really be helpful to me, particularly in a vending machine, is if the packages would have a stripe on it that was green, and one was yellow, and one was red, so that I wouldn't have to go, what's this? I mean, I do choose the baked potato chips. I don't like pretzels, anyway, but I choose that sort of stuff. If I eat downstairs, of course, I also get two hot dogs, so that's my good idea. But, anyway, you know, and I know that, you know, the, I'm sure the manufacturers would just go ballistic if we asked them to do that, but it would sure be helpful to somebody like me who's stumbling into a vending machine and trying to choose something healthy for a change, just a suggestion. I don't know, maybe you could have a group of them and a green thing on the outside of the machine, shows this row is healthy, just a suggestion.
Right.
And do we have these, do we have these in this building? I haven't seen them when I go down. What's the deal?
Vending machine, yeah, we have vending machines.
Building Commission, have we let them? I haven't noticed them. Are they here?
Yes.
Are they?
But they're not county-owned.
What's it, oh yeah.
Statutorily...
May I?
Yes, yes.
Statutorily, in this, in a building, we have to contact with the visually impaired.
Oh, I see.
They run our vending machines for us, statutorily.
Okay, but I don't eat in that lunchroom that much, so that's why I didn't say them. I don't get things out of vending machines mostly. You'd think I would, but no.
And to go along with what you were saying, some, some communities have used that stoplight approach of the green, yellow, and red, and were able to work with the vendor as far as product pushers, the little rings that hold the product, and you can make those green, yellow, or red, and so that can help identify a choice.
That'd be nice.
So there's many different ways to promote that on the machine, whether exterior or interior, and so I have seen something along those lines.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
No further questions or comments? I, I thank you guys. I mean, you, you have been so energetic about this and positive about this, and the, and really, that's a lot of it towards staff behavior changes, is to see it in a positive light, and so I'm excited to start the next steps of this. But your presentation was great, and your work's been great, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks a lot.
Dr. Poor, did you want to say anything else before?
No, I don't think so. I think just next, uh, next week you will have a resolution on there to, to really roll down and won't be...
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you very much.
Are any, like, Unipacific or other companies doing this, or just mutual or whoever?
Yes, and there are, and there are actually specific vendors who are now marketing themselves as smart vendors, so to say. So if you go to the College of Public Health, for example, they have a vending machine that I could only dream of, because it's all healthy.
Great, and if there are any products that someone in Omaha makes, let's try to purchase those.
Yeah.
It's Conagra, whoever, yeah.
And we are working with WellCom, because in the end, we want to put a toolkit together so that all the businesses who want to use this can actually use this kind of phased-in approach, which I think is the right approach for it.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Duda?
I just have to quickly salute Commissioner Borgerson's tenacity. I've been in the hobo camp for years on this and dragging my feet, and darn it, she isn't making this happen anyway.
That's right.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. We'll get you to eat those baked chips after all. With that, thank you, again, for the presentation. We'll move to the committees, the first being the budget. Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Boyle, do you have anything? The first is the budget report.
Mike, anything?
We do have a schedule of meetings, and I believe everyone received a copy of those. They'll be held in 9:03. I personally would like to see them held here somehow, if we could figure that out so that people could watch this on cable. It, I don't know if we can get that done, but it would take some moving things around maybe a little bit, I don't know if we can, because these are Tuesdays following the board meeting, so that means we run into the city council.
Yeah, the only thing we could do, and this is up to you, we could try to check, I mean, if it's not costly, that's one thing we want to be careful about, is if we did it on a Monday afternoon, instead of the Tuesday afternoon, this room maybe wouldn't be in use, but I don't know that, but I think that suggestion's a good one. Joe, if you want to try, and then just change all of them to the date of Monday instead of Tuesday after the board meeting, and if other commissioners are...
I'm sorry to throw a wrench in things. The thing I'm going to ask, though, I'm going to ask Mr. Ash, if he does this video thing at these meetings... at these meetings, is that available on the Internet?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk's Office. Well, yeah, they, we could probably, I don't know what dot com would need for me. They're the ones who put the videos on the county's YouTube page. So I suppose if I got it to them off the iPad, they could probably figure out a way to get on the YouTube page. The only thing about Mondays that we were just discussing is I'm not sure if Cox would, and maybe you're not concerned about live broadcasting, but if they already have other things scheduled on that channel, I don't know if they'd move, what they, how they'd move it around, I guess.
Dan, maybe check it out, just to see if they do have other things and what they'd think of it, if we could do it.
But I think, I think at the very least, if we kept it at 9:03, I could get the video to dot com, it could be put on the county's YouTube page. At the very least, it would be...
That may be a better approach than moving everything to Monday. You know, I appreciate, the schedule really is good, because it follows the board meeting, and it really makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
There'd also be no cost to that one.
Say that again?
There'd be no cost to that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the other thing, the public access channel is not run by Cox anymore. It's now independent.
Oh, that's right. It's Jim Nelson.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can ask him, but I don't think there is a cost, except for whatever he spent in production. And he's in charge of the scheduling of that, from my understanding. So it'd be easier for us to talk to him and say, hey, you know, what time is available that you can give us? What is his name again?
Jim Nelson.
Jim Nelson, thank you.
But we may have to pay for the camera people and the production if we do that.
Not if we present it on a iPad.
Right. We use dance.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so no other issues on budget. We'll move to, I lost my committees. Next is Administrative Services. There's one item, a vote to vacate a portion of 192nd Street, north of West Maple. The public hearing on this was held Tuesday, March 1st, and William Orin from the County Attorney's Office put this on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Any questions or comments? Motion by Boyle, seconded by Kavanaugh. Please vote. Next is the Human Resources. The first item is a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, if there aren't any questions or comments on that. Second is the weekly CAO report on staff assaults. Any questions or comments, Dan?
No, there's been no assault.
And item three are legislative issues. We have one, the resolution supporting Legislative Bill 391 to change the sales tax collection fees for motor vehicles assigned to the Revenue Committee. And the hearing date was February 27, 2015. We did talk to the Treasurer's Office in there in support of this as well. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Or a motion to support.
Support. So move.
Boyle as motioner, Craft a second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
The other items are LB 344, which was Senator Kowalski's, and that's been bracketed. That happened yesterday. Item F, helping 919, Senator Williams, was the changing of provisions for relating to the Problem-Solving Court programs, and that's in the final stages, and we're excited about that. And LB 938 is Senator Smith's, and that's the adoption of the 911 Service System Act, and it transfers the funds from the Enhanced Wireless 911 to the 911 Service System Fund, and that's on general file. Commissioner Rogers?
I just wanted to ask, the SID bill, is that going to take effective enough time to affect this year's budget?
I heard it was 90 days after passage, so it won't hit the March payment, or hit the following payment, but not this fiscal year.
After adjournment. Yeah, 90 days after adjournment. Yeah. Commissioner Boyle?
You know, there was a license plate bill that I was kind of very much interested in, and I think it, I can't remember who introduced it, but it had to do with, oh, I think making it an option for other counties to use alphanumeric and so forth. You know, and I, frankly, I think the way the license plates are set up in Nebraska, it really divides us, because when you drive out and outside of these counties, you start heading west, and you've got alphanumeric, they know where you're from, and, you know, and of course, and they want to hang on to, you know, 53-dash, whatever it is. And I don't blame them, but I think what you got to do is, it'd be nice, because I think it unifies the state. I mean, it really brings us together. It's very psychological, I think. The other thing I want to mention is that, so I support, there was an effort, I frankly, I forgot the details, but there's also something kind of interesting, and I'd like Marcos, I think, to ask the sheriff and maybe the police chief what they think. In, excuse me, in Missouri, I have a daughter who lives in Missouri, and I was down there, and I was in Kansas City, and the police cars down there have license plates that say police. And so that means they don't have to keep constantly, you know, changing plates and all this two, five-digit number stuff. And it's a good thing, and the sheriff has the same thing, it's a sheriff. And so it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, frankly confuse the taxpayer or the citizen who wants to report a car because it doesn't have a five-digit number, and then it has 911, and then it has the car number. I mean, all sorts of things that are not very clear. So I'd like to see if the sheriff or the police chief would support the police and sheriff plate. The other is, the, I've always pointed this out, the post office, I don't know what the deal is, they're not a federal agency, but their vehicles have no license plates at all, none. And when you, next time you see a postal vehicle, you'll see about an eight-digit number, and it's painted on the back, and it's also painted on the front. So I don't know what the deal is. I don't know how they do that. But I'd like to see, you know, governments have that option to do that, too, because we don't really, we don't need plates. It's an expense, you know, buses have license plates. What is that all about? I mean, are they going to get pulled over? They, I mean, you know, it's nuts. And lots of times, they get corroded, you can't even read them. Anyway, I'd like to see us have the ability to put on their, you know, a six-digit number, identifying maybe if it's Public Works, it says PW, and then the number. And then City of Omaha, or Douglas County, or City of Ralston, whatever it is. I think it saves a lot of money, and it'd be a lot better way to reach somebody. The sheriff has his web, you know, his email address on the back, if you've noticed him. Anyway, I think it'd be a good thing to do, save money, and it would be helpful to citizens.
Okay. We'll put that on our, to Marcos, right?
Thanks.
Yep. We do not have need for an executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Craft, seconded by Boyle. Please vote.
I don't think so.
We're done? You can go tend to your goat, baby goat. Your kids, isn't that what they're called, kids?
Motion passes.